Namutasa Bhagavatu Arahatu Samasambuddhasa. Namutasa Bhagavatu Arahatu Samasambuddhasa. Namutasa Bhagavatu Arahatu Samasambuddhasa.
So today we are going to look at the part two of the book three, which is titled as what the Buddha taught. And we are going to look at very interesting views of Babasam Ambitkar on Buddhism. What is the, what is it to, what is, what is the religion of the Buddha? So the part two is divided into two sections. What others have understood him to have taught? The Buddha's own classification. Because when we think about Buddhism, there are so many Buddhisms around us. So for example, if we, if we have a qualifier like nationality, then we have Thai Buddhism, we have Sri Lankan Buddhism, then we have Japanese Buddhism, we have Korean Buddhism, we have Chinese Buddhism, we have Indian Buddhism and so on and so forth. If we look at the Buddhism in terms of the denominations, we have Tibetan Buddhism, we have Theravada, we have Mahayana, we have tantric Buddhism, we have Zen Buddhism, we have Shin Buddhism and so on and so forth. So Buddhism is like having so many, I would say, forms and often, oftentimes it's very difficult to know what the Buddha has really taught and what are the views of the different views prevailing about the Buddha Dhamma. And I think this, this, this section is interesting from many point of views, but one of the interesting point of views is to clarify for ourselves the, 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 the correct teachings of the Buddha. And therefore this section is very important. So Baba said begins this section with a question and this question is very pertinent. What are the teachings of the Buddha? So that is a question Baba Sai Ambitkar raises. And then he, he says that this is a question on which no two followers of the Buddha or the students of Buddhism agree. So you see, when you talk about the teachings of the Buddha, if you ask two different people, the two people, people will differ and they will have, you know, the conflict of opinion as to what really constitute the teachings of the Buddha. So there are some views prevalent about the teachings of the Buddha. One of them is that for some people, samadhi is his principal teaching. And we see this, this view prevalent in the community, prevalent in the society that many people think that the samadhi is the most basic, most important teachings of the Buddha. Then there are some people for them, vipassana and Baba Sam Ambitkar has put into bracket, a kind of pranayam. So for some people vipassana now, this word vipassana here is implied in terms of a technique that was taught in Burma that time. Because when Baba Sam Ambitkar went to Burma, there is a reference that he wanted to practice vipassana, but because he, he had, his health was not well, he couldn't do it. So we can say that because he was exposed to the Burmese Buddhism and he was in contact with the Burmese Buddhist leaders of that time. We can definitely know that Baba Sam Ambitkar was knowing, aware of the vipassana practice as a technique. And vipassana as an insight, nobody can deny the importance of vipassana in terms of samadhi, in terms of looking at the way, the looking at the world, the way it is. No one can, you know, deny that, 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 that meaning of the terminology when we use vipassana. But I think here Baba Sam Ambitkar is referring to vipassana as a technique. Some people think that Buddhism is esoteric, that to others it is exoteric. You know, it's like inward looking and outward looking. So some people think that it's, it has to do only with our inner lives. It has to do with something secret, like what we, 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 we look, we, we, we find in the tantric Buddhism. To some, it is a system of barren metaphysics. So you know, for some people, it's a philosophical speculation about the nature of reality, sunyata and you know, all these philosophical terms that we see in Buddhism. So for some, that is the case that it's a system of barren metaphysics. For some, it is a sheer mysticism. For some people, it's sheer mysticism, like mystic. It's, 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 it's a mystical thing. It is not natural. You know, like for example, the human consciousness itself is mystical. But now that view has been challenged even by the philosophers of mind that the mind is not mystical. It's, it's very natural. You know, the, the consciousness is natural, just like you know, air or water or whatever different phenomenon that we see, the consciousness is just like that. There is nothing mystical about consciousness. There is nothing mystical about Buddhism. To some, it is selfish abstraction from the world. So for some people, you know, Buddhism has nothing to do with the world. You know, it is like, it is like going into some kind of an abstract world and you know, to, 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 to dwell in that abstract world. So such is the case for some people that for them Buddhism is selfish abstraction from the world. To some, it is a systematic repression of every impulse and emotion of the heart. That is another prevalent view of Buddhism that we have to suppress, we have to repress all our impulses and all our emotions. And then there are many other views regarding Buddhism that could be collected. So there are many views about Buddhism. There are many, many theories about, about Buddhism. And then Baba Sam Ambitkar writes that these, these views, divergence of views is astonishing. Some of these views are those of men who have a fancy of certain things. Such are those who regard that essence of Buddhism lies in samadhi or vipassana or esoterism. Okay, so some people have inclination fancy for meditation, some people have fancy for samadhi, some people are fancy for esoterism and they try to take Buddhism as, you know, only that. That's what Baba Sam Ambitkar is trying to say here. The other views are the result of the fact that the majority of the writers on Buddhism are students of ancient Indian history. So most of the people who study Buddhism, they don't study Buddhism for the sake of studying Buddhism, but they are the students of the ancient Indian history. Their study of Buddhism is incidental and occasional. So most of the scholarly studies that we see on Buddhism, they are incidental and occasional. And some of them are not students of Buddhism. And some of the people who have the divergence of the views are not the students of Buddhism. They are not even students of anthropology, the subject matter which deals with the origin and growth of religion. So anthropology as, as a branch of humanity is a very, very interesting sort of discipline where one studies religions, one studies cultures, one studies the evolution of languages and so on and so forth. And we know that Baba Sam Ambitkar was a student of anthropology. He has studied anthropology in Columbia University. So his, his take on Buddhism is, we can say, he is in a sense trying to look at the anthropology of Buddhism. Here in this particular section. The question that arises is, did the Buddha have no social message? Because this question never arrives. You know, I have had several dialogues with the traditional Buddhists and a lot of people think that Buddhism has nothing to do with the society, it has nothing to do with the world. You know, it has nothing to do with what surrounds us. It's only about you. You know, you have to transform yourself and that is it. So Baba Sam Ambitkar says, raises a very pertinent question here and we all have to ask that question to ourselves again and again. Did the Buddha have no social message? Whether the Buddha has a social message, that's the part, we can put the question positively. Did the Buddha have social message? When pressed for an answer, students of Buddhism refer to the two points. So even the Buddhists, students of Buddhists refer to two points when this question is asked. And they, they are, one, the Buddha taught ahinsa. So most of them will say, yeah, yeah, Buddhism is having a social message because the Buddha taught ahinsa and secondly, the Buddha taught peace. And that's why the Buddha has social message. And then Baba Sam Ambitkar goes on furthering the question. Why asking another question? Did the Buddha give any other social message? Did the Buddha give any other social message than ahinsa and peace? Then the question arises, what's number twenty one? Did the Buddha teach justice? What about justice? Did the Buddha teach justice? Did the Buddha teach love? Did the Buddha teach liberty? Did the Buddha teach equality? Did the Buddha teach fraternity? And I think these questions are very pertinent because I think this question in a way, they, they give us a framework to study even Buddhism. Because these were the questions that were plaguing the minds of, mind of Baba Sam Ambitkar about, you know, whether the, whether, whether the Buddha only taught ahinsa and peace and no other social message. And then Baba Sam Ambitkar has raised very beautiful points here as to whether the Buddha taught justice, whether the Buddha taught love, whether the Buddha taught liberty, whether the Buddha taught equality, whether the Buddha taught fraternity. So on this, in this, in this, this framework of liberty, equality, fraternity, love, justice, we can encapsulate the social message of the Buddha. And in a sense, we can say that the, this presentation of Baba Sai or Buddha's teaching is very important for the world today because the Buddhists all around are only focused on the personal teachings of the Buddha. It is not that Baba Sam Ambitkar is denying that there is no personal importance of the personal teaching. Baba Sam Ambitkar is not at all saying that. What Baba Sam Ambitkar is saying is this, that besides being the teachings which are pertaining to the person, isn't Buddha teaching about the society, isn't Buddha teaching about justice, isn't Buddha teaching about love, isn't Buddha teaching about liberty, isn't, isn't Buddha teaching about fraternity? And then could the Buddha answer Karl Marx? Because Karl Marx in the, in the nineteen fifty's was so popular. His philosophy was so popular even in the Buddhist countries that Baba Sam Ambitkar has raised really important question of that time. Even today, this question is so important. Could the Buddha answer Karl Marx when people are tending to joining the forces like Naziism or Maoism or, you know, this sort of reactionary forces? Baba Sam Ambitkar is posing a question, you know, did the Buddha, could the Buddha answer Karl Marx? And he says, and very rightly says, these questions are hardly ever raised in discussing the Buddha's Dhamma. My answer is that the Buddha has a social message. He answers all these questions, but they have been buried by modern authors. Now you see, if you, if you, if you, if we study this, this questions that Baba Sam Ambitkar has raised and Baba Sam Ambitkar himself has said that the Baba Sam answer is that the Buddha has a social message, but the social message has been buried by modern authors. That means at the time of the Buddha, the Buddha was definitely striving for justice. He was definitely striving for love. He was definitely striving for liberty. He was definitely striving for equality and he was definitely striving for fraternity. And I think, I think in a sense Baba Sam Ambitkar is clearing lot of ground that has come, you know, lot of, lot of, lot of, you know, he's clearing lot of growth around the basic teachings of the Buddha, which has definite presence of the social message. So you see this question of, you know, these, these questions are very delicate in our community that whether vipassana parts, the, whether, whether the Ambitkar should practice vipassana, what is the position of samadhi, what is the position of, you know, for example, visualization practices, mantras and so on and so forth, which are the part of different forms of Buddhism. So I think the most important question is, we cannot deny these forms of Buddhism. We don't deny these forms of Buddhism. What we are asking and what we are raising are the same question that Baba Sam Ambitkar has raised. And I think these questions are so important that, that, that we can see how Baba Sam Ambitkar has increased or re-emphasized the, the teachings of the Buddha for the society. And I think there lies the greatest contribution of Baba Sam Ambitkar, you know, to, to be able to point out to something which is, which was present in the Buddha's original teachings, but which was missed out by the modern authors. Which who were focused on mostly meditation, mostly samatha vipassana practices. There is nothing wrong in that. You know, they are, they are the part of the Buddhism. People have to practice it, practice them. But what is also important is to understand this aspect of Buddhism, whether the Buddhism, the Buddha teaches that there is something beyond ahinsa and peace that people have to strive for justice, people have to strive for fraternity, people have to strive for liberty, people have to strive for equality and people have to strive to cultivate love. And I think this, this, if we, if we, if we bear in mind these points, lot of things become very automatically clear to us. They become very, very much clear to us if we keep these questions in our mind. So we don't deny any form of Buddhism. We of course question as Baba Sam Ambitkar has taught us to question everything. We try to evaluate, we try to understand, we try to study, we try to practice, but that's not enough. That's what Baba Sam Ambitkar says, that that is not enough. We have to look at the social message that the Buddha has given, which makes Buddhism for the world today a very important tool, a very important method, a very important practice, a very important paradigm to bring social, political, economical changes in the world. And I think there lies Baba Sai is one of the greatest contribution to even Buddhism. So I think when we look at this section, I think this section is sufficient for us to, you know, sit in a debate in our communities where people have been debating over the efficacy of meditation, with the efficacy of, you know, certain techniques. We can say, okay, all right, they have to be there. If you want to practice, you can do that. But what about this? What about the questions that Baba Sam Ambitkar has raised in the Buddha and his Dhamma? And I think that sets us the ground that, that, that gives us a kind of a common core to talk about Buddhism, to think about Buddhism and so on and so forth. And, and, and we have seen that Baba Sam Ambitkar has definitely answered this question in the Buddha and his Dhamma and elsewhere. You know, when Baba Sam Ambitkar says that the Buddha is the greatest upholder of democracy. In nineteen forty one, he declares that if India wants to, you know, wants to go for democracy, they have to follow the greatest doctor and that doctor is the Buddha
Okay, sorry about that. So, I think this, this, this chapter, this, this section is clear to us now. And I think whenever we study Buddhism, we have to raise this very important question. About the question that Bhavas Ambedkar asked in verse number twenty-six, could the Buddha answer Karl Marx? Bhavas Ambedkar has given a definite answer in the book that Bhavas Ambedkar wrote Buddha or Marx and I recommend everyone to read that book. It was also a speech delivered by Bhavas Ambedkar before the award fellowship of Buddhists. And I think that was the time when the world needed to hear his thought, but the Buddhist didn't listen to his thoughts. And we know rest is the history. What happened in Vietnam, what happened in Korea, what happened in China and other countries? Because the people who were traditionally Buddhist have not looked deep into Buddhism to find out the social message of the Buddha, to find out the political message of the Buddha. And we know the result that there was so much violence even in the Buddhist countries which tries to, which tried to adopt the Marxism without studying Buddhism. And that's one of the concerns of Bhavas Ambedkar himself as to how Buddha can answer or you know can come in a dialogue with the modern philosophical tradition, modern political theories, modern economic theories. And I think that is very important. We, we, we as a Buddhist don't claim that Buddha was an economist or Buddha was a scientist, don't claim that. We claim that Buddhism through this dialogue can learn lot from this discipline. And in, 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 in that interaction, the other disciplines can also learn a lot from the Buddha. That's what we say, that's what is our position. Now, I'm going to go into section number two, which is about the Buddha's own classification. I find this very remarkable. So instead of looking at different views that people have given of Buddhism, we can, Bhavas Ambedkar has very meticulously done what needed to be done as to how the Buddha looked at his own Dhamma. And I think, I think this set us the debate about what is Dhamma and what is not Dhamma. This set us a lot of points, this, they, they, this set us a lot of contradicted contradictions within Buddhism. And I think, I think this categorization that Bhavas Ambedkar has given in section number in, in part two is very important. And this is, this whole book three is based on these three classifications of the Buddha which Bhavas Ambedkar has given and I'm going to read it. The Buddha adopted a different classification of Dhamma. So whether the Buddha teaches, whether Buddhism is only Vipassana or only Samadhi or only Esoterism or only this or only that, that question has been settled by Bhavas Ambedkar. First, by increasing the bandwidth of the Buddhism itself by, by, by bringing up very important and very, very, you know, essential questions for our time. And then in another sense, he has clear more sort of darkness around what is Buddhism by providing the Buddha's own classification to look at his teachings. So that's, that's very genius of Bhavas Ambedkar. So let's look at it. The Buddha adopted a different classification of Dhamma. The first category he called Dhamma. He created a new category called not Dhamma, Adhamma. Though it went by the name of Dhamma. Okay. He created a third category which he called Sadhamma. The third category was another name for philosophy of Dhamma. You know, some of us are studying the philosophy of Hinduism. We can say that Sadhamma is the philosophy of Buddhism. If you want to put it simply. To understand his Dhamma, one must understand all the three. So it is not enough to understand only Dhamma, but we also have to understand what is not Dhamma and we also have to understand the philosophy of Dhamma. But I think this, this three classification gives us a framework, gives us a kind of lens, gives us a kind of vision, gives us a kind of handle or, or, or studying something which is, which is sort of, you know, studied by different people and they arrive at divergent views. Now look at it, if people, if the Buddhists throughout the world, if they keep on talking about what is Dhamma, how beautiful that would be. If they keep on talking about, you know, because talking about what is Dhamma is not enough. We have to talk about what is Adhamma, what is not Dhamma. Because sometimes lot of things go in the name of Dhamma which are Adhamma. Okay, Adhamma is not negative, it said not Dhamma, it's not Dhamma. It is not anti-Dhamma. It can be anti-Dhamma. Okay, Dhamma and anti-Dhamma. But it's not definitely not Dhamma. We do, we don't have to practice it. It's not essential for our growth. And then for anything to practice, anything to understand, we have to know the philosophy of it. And the philosophy of Buddhism, Bhavas Ambedkar termed it as Sadhamma. And I think this is a very innovative way of classifying Buddha's own teachings. So today, there is so much to discuss today and I'm going to stop here for, for the part two and we will have a discussion on what I just said. But I think, you know, when, when, when you read sections like this, you have this clarity over what is definitely not Dhamma. And we are going to look at that when we study that part of this part three, a book three, we are going to look at that what is not Dhamma. We're also going to look at what is Dhamma and we're also going to look at what is the philosophy of the Dhamma that is Sadhamma. So that gives a very clear sort of exposition. It clears lot of weeds, lot of, lot of darkness around what people think, what people take as the Dhamma. And therefore, this spot two is of very, 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 very important importance. Because though it's small, it is, it's in only two pages. I think it has, it is, it sits rightly at the center of the Buddha and his Dhamma to know, to get the answers that Bhavas Ambedkar raised the questions of. All right, let's discuss. Anybody would like to say anything?
So service is in the sense, one has to strive for the others' welfare, welfare of the community.
Yes.
And it should not be limited to self, the attainment of things like this.
So we can say that mere practicing Samadhi is not enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And there are a lot of examples in the history of the Buddhist world that you know, the, the masters are told disciples, not just meditate but go out and you know help the world.
Yeah. So that's. Yeah, when two persons meet for any reason, then Dhamma must start.
Yes. Very good point.
By you, yeah, the moment by your speech, by your action. And you have to respect for the feeling and right of the others.
Yes.
While talking, while taking any action.
Ah, Mangaji, Javi.
Sushil Bai.
Yeah, yeah. When we go to this Dhamma, Buddha and his Dhamma, Bhavas said, we find there that time and again he used one word that medicant. Every two, two pages, after two pages, we find that medicant. And actually, people who are actually going for Vipassana course, uh, undergone the course and particularly if I talk about the Mahars. Uh, their, their, their demeanor is very bizarre. And people are, common people are saying that this is a Vipassie. And he has a series of relations with society. And with the talk like that, that go for Vipassana and purge your old things and all that thing. So it's for us to, and, and if especially, especially if we talk about the disposition of our people, then we must understand one thing that we have to tell them that if Vipassana is not for your all party friend or something like that, but to go to, into the society. And I personally gone through that course and the Mithabhana and other things are there. So it's very significant, I think, that people particularly from our community to go to, into the society and tell them what's the significance of the Buddha. And actually, when we go and sit there for Vipassana hour, that sitting, sitting, we, we can understand that was Panchashila and watch what, what, what five priest said. He told and what is actual Dhamma. So it's very vital for us to aware them, aware people who are going for Vipassana courses, course to not to go, not to, not to display that you, you don't consider, you don't have any tie with your own society.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's like that, I think so.
You're right, you're right. You know, like what happens is we call asthankika marga. So there is an anga, astanga. It is not just one anga. So like, we have to develop all different organs. For example, in the human body, if only heart is developed, other organs are not developed, then we cannot call it the full human being, you know. Likewise in Buddhism, we cannot just say, pick up something and say this is Buddhism or that is Buddhism. We have to see that, you know, we have to see Buddhism in totality. So when we, when we see, look at the practices or techniques, people take a technique and think that they, that is Buddhism. People take one particular thing and say that is Buddhism, but that is not, that is not Buddhism. It's a very narrow Buddhism. The Buddhism, for example, if we talk about the, 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 you know, the fundamental teachings, Sheila, Samadhi and Pradnya that the Buddha taught. And there is no Buddhism outside it, Sheila, Samadhi, Pradnya. So you see Sheila is, has to do with other human beings. Isn't it? So we have to develop the organ of Sheila, we have to develop the organ of Samadhi. We have to develop the organ of the Pragna. It's not sequence that if you practice these, then that, then that. It's not going to happen like that. We have to develop all the organs together. You see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, yeah, right, right. Way true, way true.
A good point, Sushilji, good point.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Ah, yes, here. I think regarding communism, Dr. Bhavas Ambedkar had delivered lecture at Kathmandu. There he has said, we accept communism as an elephant. But don't, we don't agree with the tale which is of communism and that is of violence. Had Dr. Bhavas Ambedkar not been interpreted that, that thing, I think entire India could have been captured by communism.
Yes.
It is Bhavas Ambedkar who had actually stopped the wave of communism in India.
Right, 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 right. I don't know whether we have studied Buddha and Buddha or Marx in our VRG, but it's a very interesting study. I have done a few studies of that with some people and it's very interesting to study Buddha or Marx. Very technical, but you can, you can get lot of insights when we study the Buddha or Marx. Maybe we will, we will do that after this or when we.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's very interesting.
Very interesting. Good point, Mahasangji. Anybody else?
Ma.
Michelle, madam. Sunaji, Ruchaji, Rahul. Two Rahuls.
Keep on.
Yes, I'll go on.
And now there is a trend that if we practice little bit Vipassana, means we have done a great social work.
Yeah.
Just by, ah, so that is dangerous.
Yeah, yeah. This, this, this question. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you're right. You know, the, the, the small book three, what the Buddha taught. And Bhavas Ambedkar has, has made two pages into one part. Show how significant is this part of the Buddhism?
This is very significant. In fact, this needs to be practiced by people. This needs to be studied carefully.
Yes.
And diligently.
Yes.
People should mind enslaving or dominating others. And they, they should not make other people unhappy by their speech or action or do some unfair thing with the others. And if we follow the path of righteousness, then these inhumanity and all injustice can be removed.
Right.
That is why Eightfold Path is very much necessary to follow for every Buddhist.
Yes, true. And Eightfold Path has also, you know, this social message inside it.
Yes.
Because practicing Eightfold Path implies that we are practicing in the society.
Yeah, path of righteousness.
Path of practice.
Path of virtue.
Yes, path of virtue, that's true. You see, when we study Buddha and Dhamma, lot of these all dots connect together and you get it as, you know, a complete whole. Anybody would like to comment?
Yes, Mangesh.
Yes, I have worked, I have worked very closely with these Janeyudhari comrades, I must say.
And they have done more harm than good for the society.
Right.
And they have no morals, they have no morals. I've seen them smoking, I've seen them drinking and whatever it is, which is very, very different from what Baba Sev has taught us and what Uta has taught us.
Very true.
By really, my father, he was a communist and he worked very closely with comrade E B Badan. But when I understood Baba Sev, I literally stopped this thing. I mean appreciating this communist, that what they are doing for the society.
Yes, yes.
Previously, I used to think that they are doing a great social work, but no, they're not doing anything. They still believe in God, they still believe in goddess, which is very different from Marx's ideology.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I really do like to trust them.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think there is so much written by Bhavas Ambedkar himself on this, these things that we need to go back and study them, refresh our ideas and, you know, memories, then we, 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 we find lot of clarity. I think you will, you will notice the quality of the Buddhism or the more you read it, the more clear the things begin to get.
That is the beauty of that book really.
Yeah. Looking at the Vipassutein paramitas like dana is necessary to remove the suffering of the living.
Very.
Yes, and one more, and one more point I would like to bring it to notice that how can we say by practicing Vipassana only it is not sufficient? When you, when you say something, may you be well and happy, so I should mean it. How will you be well and happy if the person, if he hasn't got any food and if he has not eaten for days?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is what Bhavas Ambedkar says that if you chant, may all beings be happy all the time, but if you do not.
They will be happy.
Then you know it's useless, he says.
It's useless, it's useless, yes, yes, yes.
You might feel good for some time, but it does nothing.
It does nothing, yeah, it does nothing. And practically, if you don't go and help that person or help that whoever, so maybe, so it will not bring any results.
True, 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 true.
So we, we have to practice Dhamma and just not discuss and.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, person.
I think there is a need for this discussion and debates because it clarifies lot of things. Generally, what is happening in the society, people tend to become very opposed to each other. I think this, these discussions where a lot of ideas are brought and discussed, I think is very helpful for the community to clarify. And the community which doesn't debate, doesn't survive in the future. So in a way, even people debate is okay, but when people becomes, become enemies, it's not okay.
Yeah.
Isn't it? Otherwise, how there will be knowledge? If people don't debate, there will be no production of knowledge.
Mind should be open.
Mind should be open, we should deliberate, we should discuss, we should, you know, challenge others' views, let them challenge our views. Then only some new things can emerge.
Yes.
So in this regard, I, I want to submit one thing that when we go into our society, if I call it particularly community, then each one of us tries to say that I, I know each and everything about Baba Sev and Dhamma. What do you know? And why there is a crap culture in our community? I don't understand. Everybody sees that a man, a guy before him or her and ties to be little with this, this person and try to say, you're tied to show that I do know much more about, about all these things than you. So this, this, this sort of, I can I go and ask anybody like Arik Shah, Wala, Islam Dweller, then I find that each and everybody is very well versed in all these things. And but that crap, crap culture is there. So how to remove that crap culture that I do know much more about all these things than Mangesh Devanle. This is the disposition of our people all the time. So I think, and somebody.
Yes, Sushilji, we got what you want to say. These are the faces in the society and we will tide over it definitely. And you know, a fragmented society for so many centuries is not going to suddenly get united. We have to bring the culture of unity, we have to bring the culture of love, we have to bring in the culture of harmony, we have to, and therefore that we have to strive. That's why we are studying the Buddha and his Dhamma, Sushilji. Isn't it? Hello?
Yeah, that's true. I agree. Javi Mal, Rahul Borde here.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the unity is not happening, that one important reason behind this is that groups are not having the same objectives. So I think that is the important question, how all these people can have the same objectives? If they will have the same objective, then there will be more friendship, there will be the fraternity. But that's what I think.
Dhamma will be the binding force.
Correct, correct.
All the, all the religious people, based on Dhamma, if they start coming together and hold a dialogue from time to time.
Right, right.
They will come that they will realize that what is wrong and what is not.
These people are yet not convinced that Dhamma is the benefit or it is the only means what is said that natimay sarnangayam, the momay sarnangvaram, that Dhamma will be the only medicine for them.
No, they have not studied Baba Sev at all. They have not studied Baba Sev at all, very meticulously.
No, I think that's why, that is, that is the reason I think we need to become missionaries, no?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why Baba Sev wanted that there should be monk in suit and boot. In suit. Because those days, the monks were very less in numbers. And but they were not, you know, active enough or knowledgeable.
Yes.
So that's why Baba Sev wanted that I want monks in suit and boots. Means educated, the missionary or seminary, you know, he had a plan of establishing seminary at Bangalore.
Yes, yes. Yes.
And he had captured, acquired land for that.
Yeah, I think five acres of land. He written in one of the letter that near Mysore. He talked with the Raja and acquired that land, but I don't know what happened further to that.
There is a P S college and a small Buddha V R now in Bangalore on the site. Okay, what I was thinking is, you know, these questions.
Bhavas Ambedkar had given us everything.
Yes, we have to use it, we have to practice it.
Yeah.
We have to spread it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Outside the Buddhist society of India.
Outside of country also, that's true.
Outside our country also. We should have. This question.
Yes, yes. With other. We have to, we have to interact. Bhavas Ambedkar had said that I have, you know, established a relation with international community by adopting Buddhism.
Yes.
Yes.
So that, that also we have to exploit.
Yes.
Yeah. That day, Iya Santusika from Santa Clara, she was knowing quite work of Dr. Baba Sev Ambedkar. He has done for the Buddhism.
Yeah, but he was not aware twenty-two pledges.
No, that is internal.
No, no. Yes, but, but they also, if we pose question, they also start studying Baba Sev.
Yeah.
And they will realize the worth of Baba Sev.
I think what we have to do, we have to prove the worth of Bhavas Ambedkar by ourselves.
So we have to attract them to study Baba Sev.
We don't insist anybody to study Bhavas Ambedkar. They should be forced to study Bhavas Ambedkar by our own people. In a sense that the more Buddhism becomes stronger, the more people will get attracted. Our goal is not to convince people to study Bhavas Ambedkar, you know, let, they will come. The whole world will come. The first thing first is that we have to become strong in the virgin of Bhavas, you know, Bhavas Ambedkar. We have to become very.
People of Hungary, that they have attracted and they, they are going to establish, install the statue of Baba Sev Ambedkar there.
Yes.
So like that, on their own, they should do. But this will happen.
Use the word shoot and all, let them study or not study. The first duty is to study Bhavas Ambedkar and to exemplify is our duty. Okay, the more we study, the more stronger we become as a community, as a Buddhist, the more people will, you know, come to learn our Bhavas Ambedkar.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? If not, then what I would say that in the future, you keep this, this all questions in your mind, number one. Number two, from the next class onwards, we are going to study this threefold classification that the Buddha himself gave, himself gave, the Dhamma, Adhamma and Sadhamma. And these are going to be very deep. What I'm thinking, you know, this going, I'm going to take each of the section for one class. Even if it's a one paragraph, I'm going to devote the whole class for that because this book is very important. Okay, and I would like you all to go through the, you know, the material before you come to the class. So that you have, you have ideas, you have, you have something to ask, you have something to reflect upon. Okay, so with this, should we conclude our today's class?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody is having any last question and remark, if not, then we will conclude here, okay? Anybody? Sushil Bai?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Vaishali Thai.
Vaishali Thai?
Vaishal Thai was expounded by Mao's people and communist people and her father was a worker.
Yes, yes, yes.
He had seen all those people. It, it would be, it would be a ramble for this class, but I, I must say that one thing, with all these people and Indian, actually, the Brahmins are dominated, all the parties, all the, you know, philosophies in India. And you, we all, all know that Namo Dripada was there down the state. And all these people are from, and particularly Brahmins, Brahmins have had your money on, on all this, what we can say that philosophy is. So I must say that we can't say that all the people are like that. But yes, because they're people, they don't drink, they don't eat meat or something like that. Still, they are, they may be asking their rank and file to do this. And Vaishali Thai might have, might have come across these people.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Daily I come across these type of people in my office also. But when I started reading Baba Sahib, I never, I mean, I'm never scared of them.
Good.
I mean, I have got that, I've got that energy to question that.
Right, right.
I can. But there are many honest communists also, uh they, they work very hard.
Yes, yes, Mahasanghi, that's a good question, but that's not what we are discussing here today. I think our, our focus is how the Buddha answers Karl Marx. How, you know, the Buddha promotes justice, how Buddha promotes liberty, there are a lot of questions that we can discuss. But I think let's stick to the.
Yeah.
Topics of the class, okay?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you, brother.
Hello, yeah, this is, hello.
Ah, Rahul.
Yeah, this is Rahul Bode, yeah, yeah. Yeah, couple of months before I read one book, the Jain teachings of Buddhism. Just I would like to share some findings in one or two minutes, that may be helpful for some other. So means usually there is a question that whether Vipassana is a teaching of Buddhism or some people treat it. That it is entirely the Buddhism. So I found there some two, three lines, which made my view some little clearer about the Vipassana thing. So in one of the suttas, it is mentioned that there are uh means total three elements. That is greed, hatred and delusion. And out of these three, then that further divided into one zero eight. So what it says that when there is a greed, so for overcoming the greed. We should practice shield. When there is a hatred, then for hatred, there is a medicine that is called as Vipassana. And when there is a delusion, that is called as agyan, then that can be removed by wisdom. So I think the importance of Vipassana is related to the hatred and the anger management. So I thought that is a means.
Very good point.
Explained by the Buddha Dhamma that I wanted to share, yeah.
Good point, good point, good points.
Good question and for a mind concentration.
Yep, yep. Yes, thank you.
All right then, see you next week. Jai Bhimno Buddha.